Can you hear us out there, Carrie? Can you hear us, Pat? Can you hear us? Okay, we're ready to go. Let's call the meeting of the Nauset Regional School Committee to order. It's Thursday, February 6. We're at the Nauset School, we're at the Nauset Middle School, our new home. So, as required by the open meeting law, we are informing you that the district will be videotaping this public meeting. In addition, if anyone else intends to either video or audiotape this meeting, they are required to inform the chair. And nobody has informed me, so I assume nobody is videotaping. Any agenda changes? No, no agenda changes. So let's get started. Public comment. Okay, we have this period for public comment. If there's anybody out there that would like to speak to the committee for three minutes or less, please raise your little yellow, white hand, yellow hand, and so we can recognize you. Can I ask, Arlen, anybody there?
No, she says none.
No, all right. We will move on. So we move on to the consent agenda. We're going to approve gifts, grants, and fundraising in the minutes of January 23rd. And so, just as we start to recognize, we have three grants. So, the Nauset Regional School Committee would like to acknowledge and thank the Brewster Ladies Library for its donation to the Nauset High School Jazz Band. And also the Cape Cod Club of MIT that has given a grant for STEM programs at the high school. And, this one I thought was really... The Peter R. Marsh Foundation, which has given a generous grant to the Nauset Men's School Music Program to buy additional instruments, in this case, ukuleles. So, and in return for this grant, the music students will provide a minimum of three musical and visitation engagements to senior audiences in the communities. So it's cool. So with ukuleles, I expect our seniors will be hearing Tiny Bubbles. This is the ukulele song. So, thank you very much to the three organizations. We are grateful for the donations, and we can assure you they're put to good use. So, any other comments on any items on the consent agenda? Any out there in Zoom land? No? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? No? Okay. All right, we're gonna have to take a roll call vote here. So, out there, Carrie Hoffman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rick Draper?
Yes.
Catherine, you're not there, are you? Do I? I don't think I see her. Okay. Tom, how does it vote? I vote yes, Nora?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Unanimous. We accept the money unanimously. Okay, down to priority business. Our student reps. Who's first up here?
I wonder who you think.
See, this is challenging me. This is when I need glasses, and I don't care if glasses...
You start with Annabelle.
Okay, I don't know. I can see the face, but...
Is Savannah on? Does she want to go first?
Oh, yeah, she is. That's very nice of you.
Hi, everyone. I have a few updates tonight to share with you. National Junior Honor Society just got back from our Chicago trip late Sunday night, and we all had a great time exploring the city in the conference we attended. And it was a great opportunity to learn new leadership skills and meet other National Honor Society students from across the country and even other countries. It was a fun experience and would definitely recommend for further National Honor Society members. Term three also started this week, and students have switched exploratories. I have Adventure Ed, which is already going really well, and we do things like practicing mindfulness and being outside and doing different hikes. We also have a movie day the day before February break. And I'm not quite sure what movie we're watching yet, but I know that it'll be fun. Thank you, and let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah. Just remember, the weather will get better for Adventure Ed as the year goes on.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions there for Savannah? Okay, Annabelle? Up to the high school?
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to share a few things that are going on this month at the high school. We're very thankful that midterm exams are over. Term two concluded last week, and we started term three, which is crazy. It feels like school kind of just started a few months ago. I wanted to briefly share with everyone that the Nauset Green Club at the high school has started composting bins in the cafeteria. There's a member of the Green Club every lunch that monitors where students put their trash, silverware, compost, and recycling. This is a great planet-friendly practice that just takes a few more seconds of each person, like each student's day to help save our planet. Grades nine through 11 have all class meetings with guidance counselors to discuss class opportunities for next year. And, beginning next week, everyone will be picking their course selections with each of their counselors for their required classes, as well as a couple of fun classes that are interesting if they want to. On Monday, everyone will wear blue in honor of Andrew Keans' graduation. Andrew is now 22 years old, and he's a part of the 18 to 22 Young Adult Program here at Nauset. Our school will line up in the cafeteria at the end of the day with posters and form a high-five tunnel for him to congratulate him for his success here. We are so sad to see him go. He never fails to make someone smile in the halls. I'm sure there will be plenty of photos so everyone can see later in the week, and that's it for me. Thank you, everyone.
So when you say you're happy that midterms are over, how happy are you?
I'm pretty happy. We still have finals, but it's good to have one less exam to think about this year.
I don't blame you. Okay, thanks. Any, any questions?
Thanks, Annabelle.
Thanks, Annabelle. Okay, and now we have an overnight overnight, a field trip request for a trip to England. Is there somebody that's... There's Paul Kelly. Mr. Kelly, are you speaking?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. My colleague, Noelle Smith, she gives her apologies. She had a family emergency, so she's not here right now. But I can tell you a little bit about the trip. So, we're proposing a trip to England, and this will be during April vacation 2026. We were planning on like 12 to 15 students. And so Noelle Smith and myself will be the leaders of this, this group. So as far as like what we're gonna see, most of the trip is London. So we'll spend four nights in London, as well as side trips to Bath, Stratford-upon-Avon, and Oxford. The cost of the trip is $3,609. And students who pay or commit to the trip, we have like a, like a kickoff or a meeting, I guess the first meeting of the trip. The price, the students who commit to that, the price will be $3,439. So, let's see. Now, as far as funds for the trip, we expect funds will be paid by each student who is going. However, the trip is through EF Tour Group, which is a pretty well-established tour group. They have bi-weekly and monthly payment plans. In addition, they also have, it's basically like a GoFundMe page for each student. So students can, who are going on the trip, can send this out to friends and family who can contribute to the cost of the trip. And we also, by planning this well ahead of time, we're allowing students to save up for the trip. So again, this is in April 2026, so they have, you know, roughly about a year to save up for the trip. Now, the cost of the trip, it includes everything. So it includes round-trip flights on major carriers between Boston and London, hotel accommodation, breakfast, dinner, full-time tour guide. Let's see, transportation within England. So the only thing that students would have to pay for would be lunch and tips. So, it's traditional at the end of a tour to tip the tour guide. So the only thing that the cost, that they would have to pay for would be lunch and tipping the tour guide. Let's see. Now, to keep the cost down, I've agreed to a flexible as far as like when we're leaving, when we're coming back. So it could be, it could be Thursday to Thursday, so April 16th, April 23rd. It could be, we depart on a Saturday, return on the following Saturday. Or we could leave on a Friday. So we prefer leaving on a Friday, coming back on a Friday during April vacation. And that's, that's basically it. So we are proposing this trip to England, and we're gonna limit it to juniors and seniors, so upperclassmen.
Okay, any questions? I, I have, uh, she called me too. So, how are the students selected? To go on?
Well, basically, it's open to any junior or senior. And so, any junior or senior who is in a good academic standing can can go on the trip.
So it's advertised within the school so that everybody knows about it and can come to the kickoff meeting or whatever?
Yeah. Yeah, so there is someone at EF Tours who I've been dealing with, and so we'll agree on like a kickoff meeting. We're the first meeting where we, we talk about the tour, and we try to get the students to sign up. And they provide promotional materials. So, we've used them. I know other teachers in this school have used this particular tour group several times, and I've seen they're advertised their promotional material throughout the school. So yes, it's open to any, any junior or senior within, with good academic standing.
So they don't have to be in any particular English class or history class. It's anybody. Why not?
It, it, yes, it could be anybody. Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the trip. So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. This time we'll start here. Tom?
Yes.
I vote yes, Nora?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Carrie? Carrie, where'd you go? Yeah, she dropped off. Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Okay, it was a loss, Carrie. She'll be back. All right, so it's approved. Mr. Kelly?
Excellent. Thank you very much.
It's approved. Have fun, enjoy.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, done. Administrator's reports. Principal Clark. He hasn't popped off. He's still there.
Great, thank you. Tonight, the theme of the principal's report is the arts program, Fine and Applied Arts.
Are you turning your volume up maybe? I don't know if it's there or here. And then after I'm going here, or there's Moss.
My volume's full tilt.
Okay, we've got it. Thanks, Pat.
Great, thank you. So the, the theme of the principal's report tonight is the Fine and Applied Arts. And we have three people from Nauset Regional High School with me. Tom Ferris is the department head. Annika Van der Wender and Lauren DeRyder are two students who both have found a home there. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom. And the fifth of the podcasts is out. Tom was a guest with two students. So hopefully you have a chance to listen to a 15-minute podcast to get even more background. So I'll turn it over to Tom, and then we'll hear from the students. Tom?
Great. Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me. As always, it's been a busy year at Nauset High School in the arts. We were asked to submit a list of accomplishments from our arts department, visual arts, the applied arts, and music, and drama. And the list was three pages long, so I'm not gonna bore you with all of those details, but they're, needless to say, students have been very active in the arts, and we have two exemplary students here with us tonight, Annika and Lauren. Annika's mostly going to be speaking about the arts happenings. She's involved in many things, but one of those things is the arts. And then Lauren, also a very active student, is one of our star music students. Just a couple of things that, that stand out in the very recent past or the very near future. In the very recent past, we just completed, I'll just speak musically right now, we just completed three major festivals, the Southeast District Festival, where we had, I believe, 12 students that participated in that. Many of those students were principal chairs in their relative sections. We had, I think, 28 students participate in the All Cape and Islands Music Festival. Lauren was one of those students. That was just last weekend. It seems like a long time ago. And then we had six students audition for the All-State Music Festival. And of those six, which is an accomplishment in itself, and of those six, four of those students were selected to represent Nauset at the state level. And those students were Wyatt Carroll, Hannah Chung, Ryland Daniels, and Mason Elsasser. So we're really proud of those students in particular, proud of all of these students giving up their time and participating in these festivals over the weekend. I'm happy to answer questions about those if you'd like to know any more details, but generally, it's a two-day festival at a, at a host school, and these students go away for Friday, in some cases, Saturday morning, and then the concerts generally that day. The art exhibits, as these students will tell you, and music happenings are many. One of the upcoming things for the Eastham Library that we've been doing for a few years is the Recycled Book show, which has been very, very, very popular. We have a number of classes that are going to be represented at the Eastham Library. As I said, we've been doing that for a number of weeks. So, perhaps we could turn it over to Lauren if you have a few things you want to say about your experiences at Nauset in arts and music classes. Lauren?
Hi, I'm Lauren DeRyder. The Nauset Music Department has always been a place where everyone just could feel included. And honestly, it's probably my favorite part of Nauset. I am a member of the school concert band and school jazz band where I play the saxophone. And yeah, I, we have the great teachers, and I love everything about the music department. We play in so many fun concerts, and the music we play is awesome. I'll answer any questions if anyone has any questions for me.
How long have you been playing the saxophone?
So I started playing the saxophone in fourth grade. So I was actually talking about this with a friend today. We've been playing for around eight, nine years now, which is honestly crazy to think.
I think in the fourth grade, the saxophone is almost bigger than you. That must have been something to handle in the fourth grade.
Definitely. I, I play the Barry Sax, so it's, it's pretty big.
Oh, wow. Tell me you were the one at the, at the concert, you were up there with, I said to my granddaughter who's with me, there's a girl up there playing that big saxophone. So now I know who it was. That's great. All right, anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, so I'm gonna introduce you to Annika. Annika is one of our star art students as well. She's also involved in Green Club and, as I said, many other things. So I'll just, Annika, if you have a few things you want to mention, if you can, please?
Yeah, so I think the arts department at Nauset is so special to me because my schedule is so academically heavy, and I'm so involved in a lot of things at school, and I'm heading into college in a STEM major, and I am passionate about all of that, but it can feel like a lot sometimes. So I feel like when I walk into my art class or my jewelry class, which is a space that's so rich with creativity, and I know everyone else in that room is kind of in the same mindset as I am. It just, it feels such, like such a great release, like I can just put my creative energy towards this thing, and it, it's really a great way for me to balance my academics and my creative side. And I'm honestly like the happiest when I'm making art. I love painting, photography. I've been so excited with our new darkroom in my portfolio classroom, which is so awesome. And same with the new jewelry room. There's so many cool new materials that we're getting in soon, and I'm just so excited to get my hands on everything. And my, something coming up is for my honors portfolio class, we're actually having an exhibition dedicated just to our class coming up in March at Preservation Hall in Wellfleet, which is super exciting. All of the students in my class will have the opportunity to select three of their pieces they're most proud of, and yeah, I'm just so excited to get a chance to have an opportunity to show what I'm passionate about in my art.
So are these things advertised on the website or something so that we can all find them? I'm coming back to one of my favorite subjects. How do we get this out there? Carrie, communications. Get it out of communication, so committee.
Yeah, it should be, um, yeah, I know that March 13th will be the public reception, and our works will be there for the whole month of March, so.
Brad, I always think it's important to find something that just takes you into another space where you can leave things behind, and everything just kind of shuts down for a little bit, so. Yeah. I just want to say how much we appreciate having the student voice tonight. It is wonderful to hear from all of you. So, and I think especially those of us who've watched the new building, Annika, as you were saying, you know, going up from zero to where it is now, and watching that jewelry shop, for example, start to take place, or the display area take place, or even more, the practice rooms and everything else that you've got available to you now, it's just, it's just incredible. And you likely know that Mr. Ferris was heavily involved in all of that as well. So hats off to everyone tonight on the screen. Just great work. We are so proud of everything that you do. Thank you. Yeah. And enjoy. And come back and see us again. Anybody else have some questions? All right.
Judy, I'd just like to, just like to wrap up by saying the written principal's report that you have has the rosters of the student accomplishment, both in the fine arts and in the music. So if you want, Tom was mentioning some different categories of accomplishment. All of the students' names are in your report. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you to our students and Tom. Much appreciated.
You've got four students that are going up to Symphony Hall in Boston. I mean, for somebody, I'm totally not musical. So I'm an awful people that are into going to play at Symphony Hall.
Judy? Can I, can I just make a comment just how proud I am of, of Nauset Regional High School? It's just amazing. And I just wanted to bring up something that Annabelle spoke about very briefly. It was so inspiring to hear the story about the celebration of the student's success. The student that's gonna be leaving mid-year, because it's time for them to go on to adult life, and that how the whole school celebrates that. That was such an inspiring story that Annabelle shared, and I just want to thank Patrick and staff and all of the students for giving that student that wonderful send-off. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. And last day tomorrow. Tomorrow's Friday. All right. Okay, thanks for your report, Pat. That's it. And we go to middle school.
Guest, yes.
We do have live guests here. Very excited.
I'll slide over.
Yeah.
Juice. So, I'm excited to have students here tonight as well. So, to give you a little bit of background, they've got a presentation, or they're gonna have the slides and people share those slides. So, we've got some eighth graders here and a ninth grader just now at high school. And then let them introduce themselves. They're gonna talk to you about Project 351. So, Project 351 was established back when DePaul Patrick was governor. And each year since then, over the Martin Luther King Weekend, they gather together in Boston, one eighth-grade student from all 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And because we are regional, we have the distinct pleasure of being able to select not just one eighth grader, as most schools do, but we get to select five, one for Brewster, one for Morelia, it's one from Eastham, one from Wellfleet, and one from Trow. And so our students are gonna share with you what they experienced on what's called Launch Day, and then paying this year to talk about what happens the next year as an alumni of Project 351. So, girls, you can introduce yourselves and share your, share your information, and we'll be right here to help you out if you need it. All right?
I'm Emma Murphy. I'm an ambassador for Brewster.
I'm Hazel Nangle. I'm the ambassador for Wellfleet.
I'm Danielle D'Upchandrell, and I'm the ambassador for Lister.
I'm Kim. I'm an alumni from Good Year.
Next slide.
Yeah.
Basically, to someone who adopted the code, you said, Project 351 is a nonprofit organization that brings together one eighth-grade ambassador from Leachtown City, Massachusetts, to provide solutions to ongoing issues in the state. And also regional middle school, we have Trow ambassador, the Eastham ambassador, the Brewster ambassador, the Orleans ambassador, and Wellfleet ambassador.
Next slide.
Next slide. Of opening ceremony, at Launch Day ceremony, we had a chance to meet our service teams. A service team is a group of Project 351 members who are named after an important person or group. Over the year, we will work together with these teams. During the ceremony, we got to hear from the founder of Project 351. Then the lieutenant governor spoke to us and led the countdown before we put on our maybe 351 t-shirts, which was which was where we became Project 351 in 2005. We got to listen to an interview with the governor and secretary of education. We were actually at the ceremony in person. One of the best prizes ceremony was running the 351 action. The handshake.
Speaker.
So, one, at the, at Launch Day, we split up into three service groups. And one of the places we went to, which me and Danny went to, was Brighton High. And the people at Brighton High, in fact, in 16,345 people, by making mental health kits, hygiene kits, painting murals, packing food, and creating friendship blankets. And then another one of the things that we went to, which is where Art Throw and Ambassador went, was Cradle to Cramps. And the group helped many kids and went through 78 bins of clothes. They checked if the clothes had stains, and if they didn't, they found the size and put them in the correct bin. Then they would be given to, like, children who needed them. And the last organization where our, or Leeds Ambassador went, they made blankets for the people who were suffering the cold weather and passed out food outside to the people that were in need, and packaged hygiene kits with items like toothpaste and soap.
Okay, so, real, I'm on that. Well, so I'm kind of like, all of them are made out of wood and rubber joints. So, throughout my ambassador year, I have done, I did a spring project of sorting out clothes for Cradle to Cramps. And then, and then for the fall project, we, we gathered food from many places and donated to, like, donated to, like, the local And, well, and donated to like, donated to like the local food pantry. Um, I got a little too busy and, yeah, I lost track of time. And then, and then we gave back to, well, I gave back to my community by getting donuts and bringing them to the firefighters. And, um, after right now, I'm like a region, reg- regional like leader kind of. So, um, you make, you make the projects and you tell them to like the upper people, higher up people. And then they like, be like, oh, we like it. Oh, yeah. And then, and then after that, um, they tell the younger ambassadors that, um, that look around that region too. Like, if they want to do this project, you can do it. And, yeah.
Super. God, what a, what a experience.
Um, so, uh, al- also Richard there is, is bring Q. She's going to be here tonight. She's, um, she's a freshman on the varsity basketball team at high school. Um, but she's also actively involved as an alumni. Um, and Andy Dell is here. She's our eighth grade, uh, English teacher and, and she's the faculty advisor, uh, for the program. Um, and it, it's great because it instills the sense of, of community service that it's not just on the launch day, but then there's this sort of commitment that the students make to come back to their e- easily three, three hundred and fifty-one communities and give back. Um, and as you can see, the alumni piece of it, as it keep going, uh, beyond just, just that, that time. And they get to interact with, you can see Lieutenant Governor Driscoll and Governor Healy and, uh, Secretary Tuckwiler in pictures there. Um, so, uh, lots of kind of, uh, you know, big names, uh, in- interacting with these eighth grade students. And it's great to kind of kick that off. Um, and there's definitely a lot of overlap between some of our representatives and our honor society. Um, and so these are some of our leaders that I thought showcased this one.
Right. Any other questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Do I have a question? What, what struck you the most? What was, what was the biggest takeaway, the biggest impression from your Three Fifty One day?
Um, I wasn't able to go, but they went. So you can ask.
So, um, my biggest takeaway is like how there, it's not hard to do service, but it like helps a lot of people. So even though it doesn't like take up too much time to do something that will help like a lot of people. Like how the projects that I did and Danny did helps like that many people. It's just like really nice.
Yeah, it was really cool to do service and it's like, oh, a lot of fun. And, um, it was also cool to see like the founders of Three Five One talking about like how it like all started. It was just like in like a small warehouse and now it's like something they do every single year for the past fifteen years. Any other questions?
So do you see opportunities to do things when you come back here and get other people involved?
Um, after, uh, like after hearing what they have spoken about it, we're definitely going to do something in the spring with Cradle to Cramps. And then for our civics classes, we're also doing a civics project. It's basically like having, like picking some issue on tape card and kind of just like putting something together and help that. So I know one of my friends, she's doing like child protection and like raising money for child services and all that. And I know that Cradle to Cramps can definitely be used for that.
That's great. Yeah.
The chair, I, I remember when it started, for those of us who've been around a, a while, I remember when this program first started. And I, I remember when I worked at the Department of Elementary Secondary Education, our level of involvement with this, this project. It is such an amazing project. And you do such cool things, but I think for me, it was standing in that very room and it's bringing back all kinds of memories for me now. There's such an energy that you can't even describe it. And it's, I, I'm so proud that we have these representatives here this evening. And thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication to this. It is a fantastic program and I'm just so, so proud that you're all involved. Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for coming to share. Yes. Um, is there a, is there an opportunity?
You have a lot of mind, did you see that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll find the question. If there's no trade for you guys to share in front of your classmates, some of your experiences. And I think when we kick off, whenever you come, come up in the spring, we'll showcase that.
Thank you for having a sharing tonight. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a great rest of your eighth grade. You're on top of the game there, girls. Thanks. Thank you very much. That was great. All right. Thank you for coming and thank you, Diane, and thank you moms. Um, all right. Let's start stuff.
Thank you.
You love when we start off with kids. Doesn't get better.
Yeah.
Tom and I were just saying that same thing. Yeah.
No. Not, not the budgets aren't one.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. Thank you very much for coming. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Um, to have better guest seats. So, yes, we're, we're in progress.
We are, we are. We keep getting better every meeting.
Okay, and we're on to the superintendent's report.
Sure. So just a, a quick, a couple of things. I asked the principals to be short tonight. I'm going to try to be short too. Um, I just want to extend a, a sincere and profound welcome to Dr. Glenn Brandt. Uh, we are thrilled to be able to work with him as we transition. I actually was just connecting with him minutes before I came into tonight's meeting. We, we're going to start a transition process at the end of February and start to plan it out so that it's a smooth transition. Um, I, I just know it will be. He is widely regarded across the state as an excellent educator and a leader. He's definitely the right fit at the right time for MPS. He's kind, he's compassionate, humble, honest, and just a really strong educational advocate. And we will take whatever steps are necessary within our offices to ensure that he is well set up within the district to be highly successful. And can I just say, he's just such a nice man. He just really is. So super excited for, for Nauset. Other business, our workshop, we had our name voyage of the workshop, our budget workshop. And, um, I, I don't know about anybody else, but I would do it again. I would strongly encourage that it become an annual event. Um, I just felt it went really, really well. I, I remember at first when Arlin had suggested dinner, I said, oh, I don't know, that might be keeping people too long. And she felt it was such a good idea. So Arlin, all the credit in the world to you. And then Sue Murray for coming in and saying, hey, we can pull this dinner together. They did a fantastic job. Um, our principals, I thought our principals were absolutely on top of their game that night. Everybody did such a great job, whether it was Arlin, Sue and her team, our principals, uh, Pat. Uh, I was teasing him, telling him that he was the host most. Um, so just so grateful. But what I really appreciated was all four communities in one room and then their breakout sessions. And it was just, it was just fun, you know, and, and, uh, so I thought it was a great evening. Uh, budget development continues and I know tonight we're going to, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about the central office budget, where we're at with that. And, uh, our, our region, uh, the region budget as well. Uh, crisis response work, I just want to touch base on this again. I'm not reading through all this. I just want to kind of highlight a couple of things. So for the last four years, I, I know that I've been coming in and reporting that we continue to work on crisis management. And if we have something small happen, what does that look like? If we have something big happen, what does that look like? And then we took, uh, a wonderful training that, that our police departments organized for us. And at that training, we did that, I remember reporting out at the, the Orleans Police Department. Um, they brought in trainers. We had, all of us were there that, at that training that day. It was a full day training, pretty much a full day training. And they brought in all kinds of safety partners and people. They kind of pulled holes in our plans and said, what have we thought of this? Have you thought of that? And the truth was they had a lot of great ideas we quite frankly, never thought of. And that's because that's not our business. Like that wouldn't be something we would have thought of. And so after that training, uh, we went back and, uh, did a regroup and, uh, Keith Gully and Kristen Anderson and myself. We took a look at the holes that we thought we had, um, made the changes that we needed to make, reached out to resources that we needed to reach out to, to fill those holes. And then the last piece of this is pulling together the flip charts. And the flip charts are ordered. They are, uh, probably about a month away. And those flip charts will go into all of our schools. So for, for me personally and professionally, this is kind of like the last piece for Nauset. This is like the fourth or fifth work of this area. And as flip charts come in, that'll kind of wrap it up. Um, and so really pleased with our team and, and all the work that they've done that there. The business software, the office software, just want to make, mention that, that is, that we are thrilled that that has started. Uh, we began, I guess, really in just, uh, last week of January into February. And, um, our team is working on that. And I know that Gio and Jim, um, have taken some, um, has, had some involvement in that too and have attended some meetings now. Uh, we want to thought, I think, Dr. Taylor Ryan, our director of IT. He's just amazing and he really is helping us to get over the finish line. We are hoping to be, uh, up and running fully July first, but we're not pressuring ourselves. If we don't get there, we don't get there. And if we have to start it up in August or September. So, but our goal really is at July first and we think that we can do it. Um, the staff has been outstanding, our staff, as we start to populate these, uh, these different cells and pull it all together. It's very, very exciting. Uh, for those of you in the municipal world, um, if you recognize the term munis, then, then you should know that there's a connection between munis and Tyler, uh, technologies. And so that's my report tonight. So happy to respond to any questions or concerns or thoughts.
Okay, anybody, any questions? Everybody's so spread out. Um, any questions? Uh, I just would like to, uh, point out and thank, uh, and, and Peter again for the budget workshop. I thought it went really well. You guys were great kind of rock stars up there. I mean, you know, you got it down. You looked good with the microphones all up there, moving all around. But I just think that it was really good. It, for me, it just solidifies my belief in the value of getting everybody in the same room at the same time to hear the same thing. Um, and, uh, you know, different, and to hear from one another. Um, so I think it was really, really, uh, great value in it. And I, I appreciate the, the time and effort that you all put into it. I think we'll benefit from it in March. Um, and feedback I've gotten from the few people in town that were, that I know that were there, that I've seen. So I've been positive. So, yeah, that's great. Um, anything else?
Anybody? If we don't need Peter and Pat to stay on, then are they wanting to leave?
Uh, we don't want to hear about more budgets?
We can, we can talk about your budgets and we're good. We're good with this.
Sorry to hear.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
All right. Um, okay, on to the first reading of the, um, wellness policy, policy K D F. Why is it an A? Um, policies subcommittee, you want to?
Uh, yeah, this is a while ago, but, uh, Mary Ellen Mead and some other, uh, school nurses, uh, worked to, to go complete thorough reworking, rewriting of the wellness policy. Um, and we had, uh, a really good meeting with them to go over it and, and, uh, I mean, it's a good, solid, solid policy. It's not, I don't think it's any terribly controversial in there or, uh, anything that, uh, needs too much explanation for you. Much to say.
No, I hear it's up to you tonight. You're just looking at it in form anyway. So, and, and I would agree. I just want to jump on, uh, exactly what you say. The nurses put a lot of effort into this and then they connected with the principals. So there's been a lot of eyes on this as well as the wellness committee. And I think if memory serves me right, I think you kind of shaped it down a little bit because I think it started to be, was a little unwieldy at first. So I think everybody's done a lot of work on this tonight. So.
Yes, yes, we did mostly the positive, but they did mostly, uh, grammar and kind and format.
Yes, yeah.
Let the, the wellness team handle the content. So.
So I think that everybody's done a really good job with that.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? Uh, I just would like to point out two things.
Yep.
One, um, I applaud the wellness committee or whoever, uh, said, that did this for including, um, implementation in there. Um, I think that it would be good if we had implementation in a lot of our policies. Um, and I know one of Josh's favorites is the homework policy that doesn't really have the implementation plan in it. Um, and probably would benefit from it. So I think that, that part of it is, is great because policy isn't very good if it's not implemented. And, and, and you have to know that it's implemented because you've got to be able to see the, the facts on it. So I thought that was, that was great. Um, I, I would, and I have nothing against policy, but I, I, I would note that, um, in getting all of this, reaching out and getting a lot of, uh, community members, which I think is great, and other people on it. The one group that I think is missing here is the school committee representative. I mean, this is our policy. We pass them. Um, it would be good to kind of know, I don't know that any, uh, so I, if there's any. I just think that it's. I would just say, I did say the school, we don't have, I looked, we don't have a wellness committee representative. Um, it wasn't on the list.
Wasn't it like, um, there are two committees that?
Yeah, and we, we're still in the process of merging in this year. It is the, um,
the Kader Health Group.
Exactly. Yes, that's the one that, that we're just working at merging. In fact, I just saw an email thread go out, um, this week on it. So, yes, so.
So a lot of work. Yeah. A lot of work. Great.
Thank you, Josh.
Um, okay. Any other questions, comments? Uh, we don't need to vote on this, right?
Yeah, first of all.
Okay. I like that. Part of it. Okay. Nothing else, then we'll move on. Okay, here we are, budget time. So we've got, uh, two new bus, budgets. We've seen the, yeah, school budgets. Now we come to the central office and the region.
And I think, Arlin, I, I think you can hear me. Are you going to put these up on screen tonight for us?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, Gio, I'm going to just do a little tip and Gio and I are going to kind of tag team this tonight. Uh, and then, then happy to take any questions. But, um, so I just want to, I just want to lay out a couple of things. Uh, first of all, a reminder that the, um, region budget and finance committee that meets regularly under, uh, Tom, Tom Spine leadership this year continues to work her way at this and, and take a look at things closely. I know that there are a lot of people around this table that sit, sit in on that meeting, even though you're not a member of that. I don't care. You sit on there and either you often, uh, will, will sit in those meetings. Uh, Maura, you're, you're on the committee though, right? It's so, and, and Judy, so a lot of the people that are at this table tonight have kind of seen most of this. Um, so the two things that we're going to look at tonight is, uh, the, the central office budget, which I believe this command that the budget finance committee has already taken a quick peek at, but this is more for our community members who are watching it, um, tonight. So the central office budget, remember that it's overseen by its own committee and has its own chair. And they do their own separate meetings. And so, um, that, that's a budget that ultimately is picked up by all of the districts as opposed to the region. Um, we may go to talk to the region. Um, the, I, I'm going to have, um, uh, Gio pick it up here in a, in a minute to get us started. There are some things in the region budget that we'll just allude to tonight. But we've kind of updated it a little bit to show, uh, some new percentages for the middle and high school. But those specifics have not yet gone to our region, uh, budget finance committee. And just as a rule of thought, just want to remind everybody that normally you don't take things to your full committee until your subcommittees have seen it. Uh, but this is a rare moment in time where we wanted to bring it and say, listen, this is kind of where we're at right now. But it will be going back, of course, to the budget finance committee for details. Uh, so I just want to start that as well. Um, Gio, you're going to start with which budget did you want to start with tonight?
Yeah, I, if I could just say on the central office budget, um, and the regional budget, Tommy may want to add something. The subcommittee has seen it. Um, the central office budget, um, we requested that this committee. That this committee see it in draft before we have to go into the joint committee to approve it. In past years, sometimes that was the first time we saw it. And then if you have any issues with it, it's kind of a little too late because you're there with the the thirty people. So that's why we're seeing uh the draft budget of the central office, which is which is great. I think it'd be very helpful, so.
So and Gio, didn't you wanna start with the central office or region? I thought you wanted to start with the region. Yeah, so Arlen, if you can put the region up first, that's that's where we'll start. And so um if we're gonna do that, let me just speak for a minute or two here. Uh I'll just get my my own cheat sheet here. There it is. So one of the things on um when you take a look at how this all pulls together are the various budgets that come together. One of the things that's a little bit different tonight that we're bringing forward is the middle school and high school uh percentage. Increase between last year and this year. You'll remember, for example, that Pat Clark, I believe, started around eight points, something almost nine percent um in the first draft in in December. And so we continue to to work with, because at that point in time, we don't really know about retirees. You don't really know a lot of things. And so things start to kind of play out between December, January and into February. So that's kind of where we are. Uh for my lens, and we will review this with the Budget Finance Committee, is that I think the middle school and the high school budgets are now pretty much complete as they are. And they are showing the middle school is showing a two point four seven percent increase and the high school is showing a three point three eight percent increase. And that's right in the areas that we were looking uh looking to do to do that with. Um we we'll talk in a minute about the region only, the region only. You recall, that's where we've got our benefits, out of district placements, et cetera. And we'll 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 review that in a minute as well. Right now, that's sitting at um eight point seven six uh percent. Uh which is kind of, if if you think about the fact that benefits alone were up six point one, six point five, six point five. That explains why that number's kind of a little bit of where it's at. And then the region share of central office budget is up right now at three point seven two percent. Um so that gives gives us a flavor right now of sitting at five point two five. So do you wanna pick up now with the region only, then Gio, please? And and Arlen, if you can go to the next page, please?
Well, thank you. I'm gonna stop section by section and when there's any questions, I'll let I answer while I'm going through. The first section is the transportation, the transportation, which is in the in in district of the high school, middle school. Be building in the buses. Uh there's been no increases in transportation. Um the transportation subcommittee have been meeting on a regular basis. We're looking at uh leases for the buses will uh end at the end of June. Therefore, we're dealing at uh options, uh I E. We will be purchasing purchasing additional buses, of the type of buses. Um also, we're looking at the establishment of a um transportation. Uh apple account with the collaborative so that we can avoid any ups and downs in the. Cost to purchase buses long term. Our committee will meet again in March and will continue our negotiations as the next steps. And so the you'll see that transportation is overplayed in not only in the region, but also at the elementary schools. Any questions?
Maybe do a page by page of stuff in the page. You can just highlight the same points for us.
Next section is the school choice and the charter school tuition. The school choice tuition um is up six point three one percent or twenty seven thousand nine hundred thirty seven dollars. Uh and that is based on the number of students that lead the district to attend uh choice uh schools. We have level one of the amount of students leaving the district with the same uh number that we did last year, and that is fifty nine students. The charter school tuition is increased by two hundred ninety two thousand six hundred and sixty five dollars or an increase of nine point five eight percent. Uh that's based on the number of students that we looked at the number of students that we had budgeted for last year. Were the actual were this year, the actuals this year were seven point eight students more than what we had budgeted. And we also looked at uh the current uh number that we have. And um we looked at the three year average, four year average, and stayed with the a hundred and twenty four point six students. The next section uh is reduced. Uh we looked at the special education salaries tutors. We haven't spent any dollars in the uh previous years, so we reduced that number by nineteen hundred forty dollars. The special education salary, speech, uh therapist, O T P T, that number has been reduced by seventy nine thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. Or twenty eight point eight percent reduction. And that is due um to one F T E employee that is not employed by the district. They are hundred percent paid by the boost of schools. So that that is the reason why this line is lost. Any questions on page one? Moving on to page two, the top section is the special education section with respect to transportation costs. The first line of special education contracted services qualification is up four hundred and eight thousand two hundred and seven six dollars. Or fifty three point nine seven percent increase. And that's due to the uh. Need to provide transportation for out of district placements. We've had to reach out to other transportation providers as the collaborative is not able to attend to our needs. Due to the challenges faced with drivers. The next section is special education contracted services transportation reimbursement. This is based upon what we know. We reduced it by eleven thousand three hundred dollars, a reduction of forty three point plus six percent. But a need is not there next year, so we got one was reduced. The special education uh transportation has for summer. We looked at the actuals and uh projected out for twenty six. Uh equal amount, twenty one hundred twenty eight dollars. The section is up three hundred ninety nine thousand four hundred four dollars or thirty five point four percent increase. The next section is the out of district placements, special education. The special education tuition now from schools is up fifty thousand three hundred and two dollars or two point nine four percent increase. The special education tuition to various collaborates, not only K five collaborative, but other collaborates. Is up eighty one thousand one hundred and fifty six dollars or eleven point seven two percent increase. Overall, the sections are a hundred and thirty one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars or five point four six percent increase. And these placements are based on the students' ID fees. The next section uh is the uh various uh costs associated with running the district. The first one is meeting dues and subscriptions. And we looked at that number. We looked at what the actual amounts were spent in our year. We increased it by ninety seven hundred and ninety eight dollars, a two hundred twenty nine point one nine percent increase. The salary treasurer is up fourteen hundred thirty six dollars or three point five percent, and that is a contractual obligation. Overall, the section is up eleven thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars or four point five cent, seven percent increase. The next section is the salaries, technology, maintenance and support. The section is up sixty six hundred and forty five dollars or three point nine one percent increase. That is contractual obligations. Last year, when we did the budget, we did not unlock any uh increases for reserve negotiation. So that one, that's why that number is slightly higher than it is the same um when we look at the. Facilities director salaries. Any questions on page two?
Yes, I do too.
No, I think it's Carrie. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I I'm sorry, I called Heather first.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, it's just astounding. Uh you should just give a little bit of background as to the audit line. Jumping twenty thousand dollars up to seventy thousand three hundred dollars, can you?
Can you give us the line number?
Eighty seven oh five, annual fiscal audit. And actuary, what is in there cannot just be got it.
Uh there are fees for the um for the audit. There's fees for O P E D. Uh actuary reporting. And then there's uh also some additional dollars if we request any other services. Uh from our auditors, such as?
Such as the operational audit.
So that's the twenty thousand, because that's that's just a lot.
That line item is level funded from uh twenty four, twenty five, have a.
Oh, I I realize, I'm sorry. She said from twenty three, twenty four, seventeen thousand three hundred, seventy thousand three hundred. It's just that that's a lot, looking at these. That's all. I was curious about what's in there.
Well, we had it on like a change in what it was. You know, in. This cost in box to the district. And if it's anything that we request of them to do in addition to um what they normally have. Proposed, then we have to have something there to accommodate that.
So that is the actuary for the O P E D experience. Um that's also your annual audit and then the additional funding in there for any other additional services that.
Other additional. Uh Carrie was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna.
Oh, you wanna add on this?
Yeah, I didn't, we did this out and. And um I think we have three or four responses.
We had you.
I forget we had two.
Okay. There were the lawless, one who couldn't provide.
They were the lawless. Um they have multiple um municipal um in school district lines on the case. They their proposal is a good proposal and uh the committee felt that they would serve as well. We had the previous one just for a a lengthy amount of time. The committee felt that it was time for for a change. A fresh set of eyes to look at things.
That's fine. I just. I what I'm hearing is that seventy thousand dollars is not just for that any audit contract. There's other contractual obligations in that line item. Because seventy thousand for an audit would never, no, it's not just the. But thank you.
Uh, Carrie, or did you go away?
No, I'm here. Can you see me?
Uh about to have Tomas come in. Josh is gonna jump up. Good carry, we can't see you.
Okay.
Just give us a second here.
I'm fine. You could just hear my voice.
I don't know.
There we go. All right.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um so Giovanna, I I have a feeling. So I'm looking at uh line uh eight, seven, three, three, contracted services for transportation. We know that for um from to Dr. Um, oh, no, I'm sorry. Matt Kravitz's presentation about the number of out of district students has not increased. So that that number then doesn't represent more kids going out of district. So then does it then represent the additional cost that these companies are now charging us? The the transportation companies are charging us for the same amount of students.
That's correct.
Okay.
Here, can I also say too, uh like you just tagged along here, Gio, keep in mind, and and I know Carrie, you know this well. You can have the exact same number of students, but they may well change their placements. And so, for example, you know, uh we we have two additional residential students this year. And that's completely different than we had last year, you know? So those those types of things all affect all of these numbers. So even though it might, you might say that we've got twenty two, might be twenty two's very different than the twenty two that we had last year. And I know you, that's I'm just saying this more for the public than I am for you.
Yeah, and and you know, as soon as kids go over the bridge, the cost goes way up. And the other part of it is, though, for residential students, actually, the transportation sc- toss costs for those students go down. However, the tuition student uh costs might go up.
I would say that we we've seen a definite surge in students going across side more.
Yep. Thank you.
And that's it for that. Okay, uh uh. So the we have more students going to the collaborative. Is that why that's that tuition is going up? Actually, that's probably only one or two students.
There is uh the U P A collaborative and there's other collaborates.
And we have more students going to them. That's why it's up by eighty one thousand.
I don't have the specific number of students going to the collaborators, but the many of which collaborative will cost to. Um almost so than you A.
Have to do the chair.
Yeah.
And just a reminder that Gio doesn't choose these numbers. These numbers are fed to her from our special education office. And so that's why when she says she doesn't know the specifics, sometimes you, we just don't know the specifics. Because unless we go back and start to dig into see, I I mean, we've got a spreadsheet we monitor with every child's name on it. We know exactly where everybody's going and we track it, but we don't generally bring it to a meeting like this because it's obviously confidential.
Yeah.
Do you want talking uh about how Medicaid uh collection is is run? I know that it's small amount money, but I'm just curious, you know, what where's the offset for the incoming Medicaid? Because I'm sure it's dispersed.
That's run, that is in the revenue section when we do the full budget for the region operating. It's not, you know, this this is just expenses.
Right, but you will see it. It you will see it in the revenue section when we when we bring the revenue in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and then I'm assuming that the Medicaid collections, you're using a vendor to collect. Is it a percentage of what they collect? Is that the contract?
Percentage.
It's a percentage, okay.
Just one question on the legal services. Um I'm assuming that uh. The not, so this is level funded from last year and or this year. And and this year's budget includes consideration of the legal fees for the regional agreement, correct?
Correct.
And and so that would be included going forward.
Yes.
That's, that's, I would think, a substantial. Substantial amount. Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Okay, all right.
Moving on to the screens, the top section is professional development section, professional development for um our technologies. That's now as well as professional development for our facilities director. The salary professional development, uh we looked at what was actually spent um in fiscal twenty four. And we proposed the same amount of fiscal twenty six, so an increase of a thousand two hundred four dollars, a hundred percent increase. The next section is the contracted services professional development. Here, um we funded it based upon the actuals amount spent in fiscal twenty four. So an increase of twenty four hundred and sixteen dollars or an increase of a hundred and sixty two point six nine percent. The same with uh professional development supplies. Uh we looked at what was actually spent in twenty four. And we proposed for twenty six, an equal amount. That's why that is up two hundred twenty nine dollars or a hundred percent. The next section is the benefit uh component, the county retirement uh assessment. That is the pension that we paid to the boss that we paid to Boston County for the non-teaching personnel. That's up a hundred and twenty two thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars or thirteen point oh two percent. The Medicare, uh it's a non-sense share of the Medicare tax matching um contribution. Three hundred and ninety thousand, the listed you to pay off the next year. That number is up based upon increases in in payroll, fourteen thousand or three point seven two percent. The employer's share of the health insurance. This is uh an increase of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and forty six dollars or a six point five oh percent increase. We will have some adjustments to that line item as this is an estimate. The uh K C O's health care group had a meeting this week. And um Susan, our payroll coordinator is calculating based upon the current roster that we have. With the increase in rate. So this this will change. So we'll have a change for you next time. The next one is the employer's share of life insurance. This is uh slightly up, eleven hundred and thirty dollars or fifteen point oh seven percent. We looked at the actual expended last year and we increased it to reflect that. The unemployment insurance is up twenty five thousand or twenty two point one five percent. The unemployment insurance is up twenty five thousand or twenty two point one five percent. Uh this is due to the fact that now uh coaches are allowed to collect unemployment once the season ends. So um we don't have any historical perspective on that, but I increased it by twenty five thousand to cover those additional points. The building contents liability and oil insurance is up eighty thousand four hundred twenty dollars, a thirty percent increase. Uh that is due to the uh building project of high school and the additional cost to ensure the buildings. Um so this section is on five hundred and seven thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars or seven point nine four percent. The employer's share of retired health insurance is up a hundred and three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars or ten point three oh percent. Again, we'll have updated numbers based upon the current roster of that we have in the uh the increase. The section eighteen health insurance expenses down a hundred and nineteen dollars, that's down twenty three point eight percent. And this is for the retirees that did not go on to many here once they reach sixty five. And so the the penalty is re- is reduced based upon the number of. Retirees that are still. That we have to pay for. Uh so the section is up a hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty one dollars or ten point two eight percent. The regional facilities director salary is up seventy six hundred and thirteen dollars of six point oh nine percent. And that reflects two years of percentage, as I mentioned earlier, we did not have funds in here. For reserve negotiation when we budgeted. The salary elementary curriculum director um is a reduction here of thirty two thousand three hundred and seven dollars, a hundred percent reduction. The employee will be retiring and the duties will be um pursued by the assistant superintendent. So there are no funds requested here. We get down to a grand total of eighteen million three hundred and forty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty one dollars. An increase of one million three hundred and seventy seven thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars or an eight point one two percent increase. Below we detail the increases and the cost centers operations are up seven point four nine percent. Special education eleven point seven four percent, there's no change in the regular day transportation. And the choice uh charter school expenses are nine point one six percent. Any questions on this page?
Heather.
Can you talk us through how the employer's share health insurance eight seven two O has been figured over the years? Because if you start walking through twenty two twenty three budget compared to actual, there is one point three million dollars in savings. Or fund you're spending there, then you go to the next year, twenty three twenty four, we budgeted three point eight. Uh six million, we only spent two point seven nine four million. And then we jump up to this current year at over four million and then we're asking for another four point three million. Based on those expenditure trends, that does not seem accurate, how are those arrived at? An actual individual, you know, elections, or is this just we're putting six point five percent on the line item?
We budgeted a hundred percent in this line item and then when we get to page four, we reduce the budget. Based upon the revolving funds that we utilize to uh pay for those costs. We utilize through the choice uh revenues to uh pay for some of the uh costs of the uh employer's share of the health insurance. But if you look at the the budgeted amounts over the past couple of years, the budget amount is consistent, it's just the actual, the actual amounts I pay. There's certain am others paid out of the uh region budget and the rest is paid out of the revolving account.
So what's the total? What is the total expenditure that is related to this, because that's a little deceiving.
It it's not deceiving because we detail it on the next page and we've been recording with this now for uh. This will be our third season that that's how we report the um the cost of the health insurance.
Just to to uh to Heather's point, I. I mean, for for those who have seen this uh for a few years. We understand how it's done, but. But to point out, it's very difficult to figure out what was actually spent in health insurance. Because even if you look at the next page, um it doesn't say that choice funds. Have gone to that line item, so I I I think it's a matter of how. And hopefully with the new software, we we can improve the way that it's reported. Because it is difficult to to understand. And some of these things like, and and they're the big ticket items. Like the county retirement assessment, the health insurance, the retired health insurance. It's hard to tell if how much the rate went up and how many people were involved. So there's, you know, you we come to this figure because it's amount of money multiplied by. Number of people and we don't know the number of people, are there more people, are there less people, so. I I I I understand how it's done, but it's. It's really, it's confusing and it's. It it's just very difficult to sit here and look to see if it makes sense. I'm not saying it doesn't, but it's hard to see with these numbers um and the way they're presented. That's no secret, I've said that before. So it's.
So again, I guess back to my question, maybe Judy for clarifying that, if that was the case, then the. It's gonna use the term on the line item, the offset should have been noted under the actual column on the following page for twenty two twenty three. Using various other funding sources, is that what you're trying to call it for your line, if we go to page four?
Um when you indicate to the left side of the the budget document, use of circuit break and bonds. We're gonna be using nine hundred and twenty five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars of circuit breaker funds, so circuit breaker funds are not within the operating budget. We can't comment on costs that are in the operating that are also in the revolving accounts. That's why we detail here that we will be charging uh nine hundred and twenty five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars of costs that are in. Line of eight seven three five, the special definition to which tuition non-profit schools to the revolving account. The same with the use of uh school choice funds, we will use nine hundred and eighty dollars of school choice funds. To offset any costs in the employer's share of the health insurance. The other uh revolving accounts that we have typically used in the past, uh K-Cadis Tech Revolving Funds. We'll use that again to offset um some of the health insurance and the use of the fiber to evolve comes to offset some of the health insurance um costs. You know, in the past, we didn't have this section in the budget and it was confusing when we got to the big picture. And it was net of what we were using for the revolving funds and everyone didn't understand that. So we were asked to put this information at the the end of the the budget documents. When you look at the uh combined budgets, you see that I'm carrying over the full sixteen million. Four hundred and twenty two thousand two hundred and ninety one dollars and that's reflected on the combined budgets. In the past, that wasn't the case, we stopped at page three and there was confusion. So we thought by doing it this way, we would avoid any type of confusion, but we can put a disclaimer in the ju- justifications to explain. Uh if that's um easier to when people are reviewing the budget documents.
Probably, um so just so I'm clear, you using uh the actuals from twenty three twenty four. Because that's what I'm able to match up. Line item eight seven twenty, which is employers' share of health insurance on page three. And adding that actual number to page four, the same eighty seven twenty, the three line items that you've noted here. As alternative funding sources, which is a normal practice, the total actual expenditure was three point eight million dollars. For twenty four, this year twenty four.
We have budgeted at least point eight six four and if that's what we, what addition comes up to, then we're welcome to begin the uh the budget amount.
So that that was the actual.
So the actually would be what you're seeing in line eight seven two O plus you'd add the uh months that. We've uh took out of the uh school choice bonds and the uh other two revolving.
Okay, good, good, so thank you for clearing that up. Um but my original question still stands. Where is this number for our proposed twenty five twenty six budget come from? Are we actually looking at the experience by employee and rolling it up to assume that they are staying on the same plans? For the next year, or do we just use a line item straight percentage increase like it is here?
So we look at the entire roster that we have at the moment and um our. Payroll coordinator looks at the plans that they're in and. Based upon the increase that we have in the health plan now at six and a half percent, she calculates up. What's calculated here is based upon six and a half percent of the amount that we budgeted last year, as I said earlier. We just received the numbers, the final numbers from the just pocket group yesterday. So Susan uh is putting together a s- a roster of all the employees, the number of employees that take the various plans. And the cost to the district and she does the same um exercise with the retirees.
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
And that's how, that's how we budget.
Brooke, um yeah, just to just bring from that, so I I do wanna just reiterate and and maybe because you're you're speaking quiet. I'm using my outside voice, but maybe that's. As as a teacher, those of you who are teachers around the table know what I'm talking about. Um I, she had mentioned right at the beginning that remember that this is a draft, remember now, I I wanna stress too that we were. I will say I, I was a little anxious about bringing this tonight because we are still getting numbers in. So there are, there's still a level of fluidity that's happening here and she did say that at the very beginning. And she did alluded to the fact at the very beginning that Sue Wallen, who and and for for those of you who don't know who Sue is. She and she oversees our payroll benefits and that component, so she's really our guru for all of this. So you heard her say, we just got these numbers yesterday, so we haven't had time to go through and do the specifics just yet. The six point five, I mean, even that percentage was in play for the month of January. We really didn't know if it was gonna come in a six point five because initially we thought it was gonna be eight. So and that's kind of typical too every January, so really what we're going through right now is very, very typical for us. So keep in mind that this is still fluid, there are still lines that are gonna change as we get our numbers. Even this week, we are anticipating and again, we have said that all the way along. That we get some certain numbers in the the last week of January and the first week of February and but. This group doesn't need to get until the very end of February, so we really wanted to bring you something, even though we know that this is just a draft. But it's a, it's a relatively solid draft, but there are still going to be tweaks for sure. And Heather, exactly what you're talking about, those are the tweaks that that we're waiting on now. And and just just about, for those of you who are new to the committee, this committee. Um always, almost always, will see each of the budgets twice. If not three times, maybe four, the third time would be when we finally pass it in March. Um but it's but it's very typical for us to see the budgets twice. So this is, as Brooke said, the first draft, second draft, so. And the 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 reason for doing this is so that we can look at. Anything that might stand out to us, um have the questions then and then. You know, get it addressed by the second draft and not. And not. Have to have the second time we see it be the time we wanna pass it, so that's that's the reason for the two views. And just a reminder too, I mean, your your budget, as you know, like for those of you sitting around the table, the budget and finance committee. You you go after this as well as this large table goes after it and from, I will speak for myself, but I'm sure the Jill's like this too. I mean, sometimes we we look so much at these numbers that we might miss something and that's okay if we can bring it up. Because we've been looking at it and kind of tend to get a little glassy eyed and and so it's okay if there's, if there's like no blame, no shame. If you find something and you think it's on the sink, we want you to tell us that we can go back. Because if there's a fix to be made, we see this as a partnership and and we, and I think that that's just really important. Between the leadership at the central office and our our committee members, we see this as a partnership as we build these these budgets. Uh and I agree one hundred percent with everything that Judy just said, except that I would take it one step further and say, most of you see this, I don't know one hundred. Before we get to March, just maybe not a hundred, but probably five, six, if you think about it, you know, like central office budget. Or, yeah, there you go.
One last one Monday.
Well, we hope that there's one last one on Monday, yes, but even the central office, I mean, now you've got numbers, we're just waiting on even now. Um like we've got, I think, two or three numbers that we're waiting on before we plug that, uh those those rules as we sit here tonight, so. Anyway, and and that's it for me for the regional only, any other questions on regional only right now? Before we move to central office then. That awes- awesome. So central office, let's let's see if we can get that kind of pulled together and I don't know if there's anyone. Um um certainly anyone on the committee that's been um overseeing that central office and sitting in those meetings. And certainly feel free to speak out as well, and Tom, yes, Tom, I I don't know if there's any comments that that you would wanna make with regards to the central office budget.
No, for me, much of it gone over it. There are four times and each time we find something uh, something more meaningful and 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 Gio seems all over those. We're pretty close to uh having it completed, we're waiting for uh superintendent to be hired. So we can drop in those numbers, uh and we're looking at the technology to make sure that we don't uh have. Two system paying for two systems at once, but Gio was working through that with Mac. Uh and there'll probably be a savings there, but I don't wanna take away your thunder, but this has been uh, this has been mulled over. And and uh more complicated portion is is the uh distribution of of uh. Of benefits from the central office and the retirees uh to the elementary school.
So if I can spring from uh spring from that, thank you, Tom. So I wanna be really clear that we've got this housekeeping layer that we're thinking that we wanna layer over all of this in the month of March. And so our goal right now is in the month of February to make sure that all of our budgets across NPS are all finalized. Just apples to apples and oranges to oranges, as if we were gonna do nothing else and this would be a typical year. In the meantime, we in the background are working and saying, okay, and I know that uh Gio's given done, I don't know if you've included the sheet tonight or not. But for so set the central office, for example, if we land around this four to five percent, which is probably gonna be typical. Where we're gonna land central office, this is before we do any of the housekeeping I've spoken of. So it's, so that every school across NPS has hit its number first. And then we will layer in the 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 housekeeping items that need to be layered in. In central office, you'll keep in mind that there are at least three, three positions that we are putting into that. That right now are sitting in the regions and they just never should have been there, they they, those those folks were always central office people, but that's where they were housed. So when this is all decided upon, then in the month of March, I'll see us coming later, that final piece on. So these numbers, I would agree with Tom, I think we're pretty close to being wrapped up and and hoping to take a vote on Monday or Tuesday morning, I think Monday morning. Ten o'clock for open day, so that's kind of where that sits as well, a lot and and again. I think that that committee did great work and they found little pieces like and said, did you think about this or did you think about that? And I and I'm very, very grateful because sometimes you don't, you don't see that, you think, well, wait, maybe is that something we can go back after? Um so I think that some of the things that you see here, including the other way, when, for example, one of our members said, wait, that. Rural school lead doesn't belong in there, we need to take that out because it belongs in another budget, those moments, right? We're grateful for because it keeps it all neat and tidy. So I I I don't know how much detail you want us to go through uh with regards to the central office budget. If you just want a broad stroke overview, if you want her to go through any type of detail on this. But keep in mind, this has had its own committee doing its own. Throwing any type of detail on this, but keep in mind, this has had its own committee doing its own work on it, but we wanted you to see it tonight.
But I think it's important that we see it because in the past, we have to see that we've had issues, so.
I know, I completely, completely agree with that.
I, I would just. Go, I mean, go over.
Okay.
But give people a chance to ask their questions. This is the first time some people have seen. Go for it.
Just making sure she's standing up there. Version four, so we have here. One bird, remember the, you've got the one version and then you've got the one cheater with the, yeah. Different versions on it, so. Maybe let's, maybe let's take a look at the one cheater first.
Yes.
Arlen, can you put up the one cheater and we can just kind of review that? Um, perfect. And maybe just some of the salient points, uh, Geo, if you don't mind getting those.
We started with the version one. Two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Which reflected an increase of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars or a ten point seven four percent increase. Central office subcommittee reviewed, uh, the budget. Um, and we looked at certain line items that we felt that could be reduced. So we made some reductions, um, after seeing the first version by those reductions was the budget salary for the incoming superintendent. We reduced that by fifteen thousand. We looked at the joint, uh, committee secretary salary, that was also reduced by seven hundred thousand. Membership of consultants, we looked at that, uh, there was no need for one of the others. Uh, in that line, so we reduced that by fifty-three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Removed additional salaries for the salary for the food service bookkeeper into the cafeteria debalancing accounts. So we reduced that line by twenty-one hundred and forty-four dollars. We looked at the utilities line item and we reduced the natural gas by seventeen hundred and the electricity by seven nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. That borders down to December eighteen, version two's budget. Um, once we took all those reductions into account. Uh, we had a dollar increase of a hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars. We went from ten point seven four percent to eight point nine four percent. At the next meeting, um, as the superintendent indicated earlier, there was money earmarked, uh, to be used. Uh, from those through aid to offset some of the expenses in the technology area and. It should not be in the central office, that belongs to the region as the elementary, we see their own rural school aid. Um, so we had to put that back into the, into the budget. The contracted services technology, uh, this represented sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars of the maintenance contract for the new system. Financial system. We had money earmarked in the substitute staffing in the business office for transitioning services. Uh, we reduced that by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, that borders that to version three. Two million, two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars or nine point one three percent increase. The proposed version four, uh, we looked at, again, at the technology line item, eighty-eight thirty-eight. We had, uh, budgeted for, uh, maintenance contract for the old financial system. As well as the new, so we felt that we didn't need the full year for the maintenance contract. And we would be, um, transitioned to the new system on July first. Also, we reduced that line by twenty thousand. We also looked at the remaining funds that we had in the substitute staff for the business office. Uh, we reduced that by fifty thousand. The other item that we had, we had some money earmarked for separation costs of professional salaries. We took those funds out of seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars as we had a, uh, resignation retirement in here. And we felt that we did need, uh, the separation cost for the substitute staffing. As we thought that the amounts budgeted in the salary line items for the business office, student retirements would be able to cover these costs. Uh, there's still an amount to be placed for this, uh, negotiations for the contract of the incoming superintendent. And that is to be determined and we'll have that information, uh, for our meeting that will be. Central office meeting on Monday. The other item that we're looking at, we're also looking at, uh. Prospect technology for the new financial system, we have covered all those funds in fiscal twenty-five. Uh, as the, uh, implementation is gonna be staggered for the next few months. We're looking to see if we move some costs into fiscal twenty-six, I'm waiting for the vendor to get that. So right now, the, uh, version four, as it sits today, like these are a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. And that's a four point nine six percent increase. Now the costs for the central office are allocated based upon October first enrollment. Information that we have with the, the region and the elementary schools. And that enough is detailed on page, um, six, the allocation. Hope there's, um, any questions on the allocation percentages. The region's, um, responsibility on the central office is fifty-nine point oh eight percent. And the, the remains earmarked to the by.
Well, that's a snapshot, but happy to take any questions, um. Uh, you know, from, and, and I, I too would agree with Judy. I think sometimes this, this particular budget came up, I think far too late and I would agree with you. I don't, I think sometimes we didn't see it until that March meeting. So you're, you're seeing this in advance, but again, keep in mind that it's a draft, that the, that committee still do some fine tuning. It's like last, last minute fine tuning. There's something major.
I have a quick question.
Laura, so I'm wondering, I know we've talked about version five, I don't know if we're planning to, I know it's in here, um, where we switch. A number of costs that were in the region only budget to the central office budget. My question actually is more, I think my brain is just over school committee at this point, but. My new word, is that a true? The region budget, have the line items that are being shifted to the central office budget? Because they are more appropriate there, have they already been taken out of the region budget that was?
No.
Okay, good. There's not.
That's the last step in this process. Uh, Carrie, did you have another question?
I, I did, a real quick question, um. You talked about the rural school aid and maybe it's just that we don't see the revenues, but, um. So the rural school aid has taken out of the, um, central office budget and put into the region budget. So, um, where does that show up in the region budget? We just went through that. Is that on a separate revenue page?
That is a revolving, um, account.
Okay.
That, you would not see it, it comes separately, um, separate as, uh, the chapter seventy-eight. In the, in the past, we've used it to reduce. That is especially if you guys passing salaries for the high school and middle school.
And keep in mind that that's not a source of funding or revenue, source of revenue that we can count on ad infinitum, right? That, that's just a relatively new, the new, uh, source of funding that's come out, I think since COVID. So, you know, it's not something that I think that we should be looking to. Put into our budgets or have available to us every single year. Yeah, three to five years, I would agree with you, I think that's what it is, yeah.
So don't depend on that.
Don't depend on it, and, and not every one of our communities or, or our schools get it, Carrie, that's the other thing, right? So, uh, some might and some might not.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to mention, uh, to look at the high school budget, we did legalize the use of rural school aid. In when we did our, uh, FY twenty-five budget. We've allowed both high school and the middle school.
Uh, okay, any other questions? I mean, the big hike in the central office budget is. Is the software, but it doesn't take very many, central office budget isn't that big, so it doesn't.
Doesn't take much for a percentage up, yeah.
Until this year, when we put it in, it'll become bigger, but it doesn't take much so to move the percentage up. Uh, so the big ticket item there is, is, um, is the software.
And if I can just mention two way back to Laura's questions, I, I have been having this discussion at every single elementary school. Um, meeting as well, so that they, they, everybody should be on the exact same page. And I brought it up again the other night in our budget workshop, uh, you know, so that, for example, like once, once you layer those other. Positions into the central office budget, if it sits around this percentage point right now, it's probably gonna be up to about forty-five point five percent. Forty-eight percent, just depending on, so where this, this particular budget lands. Um, but if you're an omnibus budget community, it won't, it won't matter to you because it's all the same. It's just housed on different lines.
The, the one question, I, I know you made some adjustments for the retirement, but there's no adjustment in salary, correct? For, uh, replacement.
Which line item are you talking about?
Eighty-eight nineteen, the business office, yeah.
No, not me.
No, again, we just got that, we just got that.
Yeah, but there were other adjustments.
Oh, I'm just sorry, yeah, yeah, that's fine, that one's specific, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Just a, a clarification, I, I know a lot of people that on the committee know this, uh. But the central office budget, the, the central office, uh, uh, subcommittee that reviews this budget. Is chaired by Gail Brier, who is the, uh, chair of the Orleans Elementary School. Uh, there's representatives in each, um, town, the elementary school on that committee. Uh, there's one for each town and, and, and we have two, is, is regional committee, it's pretty easy to name itself. So that's how it's, 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 uh, reviewing because, uh. The budget itself affects all of the schools, so. We're members of the public.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Geo.
Okay, yeah. Done, so, um. I'm sure there'll be changes when we next meet because we don't need again until February twenty-seventh. Um, so we've got a three-week break. Um, and I'm sure, just guessing, that there'll be some budget changes in a period of three weeks. They can guarantee that. All right, if there's nothing else, then let's go to reports and information. Um, any subcommittees or others have any reporting to do?
I'll do a quick report, we, uh, the building use subcommittee met earlier than we are small, fighting. Uh, we actually have Principal Clark with us this week and it was really helpful. We invited him to talk about what he thinks the spaces available for community use would be. Um, so we talked a lot about that. He also has a tremendous amount of experience from his time being the principal at Barnstable. Which, uh, uses that space in a big way, especially with symphony. Uh, so we had a lot of insight from him, I think he connected us to some really strong resources that we're gonna tap into. As we, you know, start to put some thought, um, around numbers and things like that, but it's like creating our own little, our own little business, right, Tom?
Yes.
It was, yeah, he was so helpful, um.
So is the building use committee also gonna talk about what's done with the funds? That are collected from the building.
Yes, so we're, so there's a variety of conversations, part of it is to cover the costs and how it's gonna be managed and, um, and then we'll talk about them. There's already been some discussion, um, about what's done in other places with those funds, so. We're gonna invite Geo to a future meeting, we're giving her a break right now, because it's a budget cycle, to talk about that. And then also, Dr. Cohen from the middle school to talk about what they're here to say. So it's consistent when we get to come up with a new policy, um, it'll change with both schools, but it's fun.
Yeah, a lot more fun than some of the other ones. Um, speaking of the, of some of the other subcommittees, is the regional agreement? And there have been?
I haven't heard anything.
I know my spots for the towns.
I spoke to Chris, um, we're, we're waiting on, they're, they're, the committee is waiting for, for you probably to.
Yeah, and Laura and Rick are on it.
Rick, can you, uh?
That's okay.
Can you mic it, update it, Rick?
Yeah, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, good. So, yeah, yeah, we are still waiting for, um, responses from all the towns. Um, I do not have the information about which towns have responded and which ones haven't. Um, uh, the, the chair of the committee, Chris, has that information. But, uh, I do know that we're, we're just, w- we have not had responses from all the towns yet. And once we do, we will schedule a meeting. Um, and I think that Chris has been working with Nancy Campani to try to find out, to figure out where she, uh, what her availability is. So that's, that's where we stand at this point. Um, it looks as though, we, we, we originally thought that the. Uh, that this was gonna be a, um, like a year and a half to take care of, uh. And it's, uh, it looks like it's gonna be close to about three years before it's actually, uh, actually implemented, so, um. Uh, yeah, stay tuned.
Um, so, but, uh, we're, we were waiting for two responses, right? Brewster, Eastham and Orleans were collectively coming in with one response. And well, we with an understanding, yeah.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
Yeah, well, get their own attorney.
Right. I know that, I know they've named, uh, cause I've gotten the emails, they, the towns have named people to the working group, but. The working group has nothing, needs something to work with.
Right.
So, that's what they're waiting for, okay. All right, anything else, any other? Subcommittee, just, uh, so just to acknowledge the superintendent, search committee is shutting down. Um, thank you, everybody, for all your, um, your, your input and your work on it. Um, uh, and we will not be doing this again for, for a while, so. Um, we should take that one off the post.
The average two point seven years or something.
Oh, no, no. Um, so, so that's that, and I guess, um, that's, that's it. Other subcommittees, the transportation's subcommittee, uh, will be meeting again, as Giovanni said, and, and March and regrouping. Um, the only decision, I think, that was made, or not a really decision, but just. An agreement, discussions is, there will be known that bus purchases this year. So you, we're gonna at least get the year of, um. Of, of relief. What happens after that is, is, is TBD, but, um, but that, that was good.
Policy's been waiting on, on masks to find time for us.
I did, if I could just follow up on that, Josh. Um, I did say to Anne, Anne and I spoke about it the other day, and if we don't hear from her tomorrow. I think one of two things will happen, like, first of all, I'm, I'm very comfortable calling and talking to him one-on-one. Um, and if they can't do something quickly, we can just do it. We can just do it ourselves and Arlen, who we love and adore on, online, has offered to do that for us. So if that's what has to happen, that's where we'll go.
In his spare time.
I was gonna say, it's just that, and she just doesn't have time. But she has offered to do that if we can't, if we don't hear from them soon, we get something solid. We, we need to get this wrapped up. What do they do? Well, I think it's just the over, uh, 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 the, the change regarding, so I think, I think that's all it is.
No, but what do they have to do yet?
Giving us a final.
Final draft.
Then finally look through everything.
Yeah, but we need to do that because you, you start back, you know, I have me for, this won't surprise anyone, but you start back, you have how much work you still need to do. And so many days and so many months and so many meetings, right? And so, uh, I really, both Anne and I wanna make sure that that's wrapped up. So we're feeling a little crunchy time ourselves right now, I think.
Yeah, because the, the two senior citizens of the subcommittee seem to be babiness. And I don't think that you can leave without getting this done. You spent how many years on that subject?
Three years on this.
He would, well, this room has been attempting me for another three years now.
Gotta tie it up with a bow.
Heather has been on that house for like fifty years, so.
Come back and so.
And this one before you leave, uh, Carrie.
Yeah, yeah, and, and Katie, feel free to jump in, um, but the, the communication subcommittee. Um, is meeting again on the twenty-seventh of this month, uh, at nine o'clock at central office and, uh, online. Um, and actually, Dr. Ray came to our last meeting and really did outline a lot of what the. a lot of what the district is already doing and what kind of plans we can put in place to make it, make our communication more robust. Um and I think, um I don't know, does uh Brooke, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh thank you. So I had a meeting the other day with the 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 company that we have been looking to potentially work with. And they will be joining us at that that very meeting. Uh so so our communications committee can look forward to spending some time with them. They're lovely. They're they're lovely people and they've got some good ideas. And I think they're gonna be really helpful for us. So they are, I think, teed up for that last meeting in in March or
That's true, thank you.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, uh future agenda items? None? Um we're meeting next September twenty-seventh, we come to number nine. And a second, it's a and away.
Hi. Here, everybody. Good night.